This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate on these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that you remain standing for just a moment. I was just notified a few minutes ago that a former council member, Howard Fletcher, passed away. Howard lived down on Elm Avenue and was a council member several years ago, but was known for Howard's TV service as well. But just to honor his memory, if we could just have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo, here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair, here. Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumford.
Here.
All members are present. We have, as usual, several amendments to the agenda. I would like to propose that we move resolutions, introductory resolutions of 1 and 2, to follow the approval of the minutes. That would be followed by moving Communication Number 2, a request from Chief Kramer to address council, to be directly behind those two resolutions. Prior to the public hearing, Mr. Stith has an administrative report that he would like to give prior to the public hearing on the tax budget. Understanding reports of committees of council, I'd like to add the committee of the whole Under administrative reports, there is a report from the law director. And then, under Communication Number 4, we would add a letter from the law director regarding executive session. Mr. Mumford.
I move the amendment to the end of the statement.
Want to restate it?
No.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo. Yes. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to minutes of the previous meeting of the June 13th, 2017. Those minutes were on your desk this evening. Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, I move that we approve the minute.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo. Yes. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have an occasion this evening to recognize several people in the community, some organizations and some people in the community, so this is one of the pleasures of being on council. We'll consider first the resolution recognizing and thanking Multicolor Corporation Global Label Solutions. It's your pleasure. Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, I would recommend that we have the first reading in its entirety, second and third readings by caption only.
Seconded by Mr. Mumford, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Do we have members from Multicolor Corporation? Do we want to come forward, please, up to the microphone? Do you have others with you?
Just me.
Just you?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Resolution recognizing and thanking Multicolor Corporation Global Label Solutions. Whereas the Multicolor Corporation Global Label Solutions, a business located on Beach Street in the historic United States Printing Building, part of a multinational corporation with 47 high-tech facilities on six continents, supplies premium heat transfer labels to a variety of market segments, food and beverage, industrial, security, and other specialty niches. And whereas, Multicolor Corporation's Norwood facility also manufactures its own heat transfer parts and equipment, allowing the company to provide a full system solution to this special label niche. And whereas, in 2016, in celebration of its 100th year in business, Multicolor Corporation, having expressed interest in getting involved in the Norwood community, chose Dorrell Field, located directly across Beach Street from Multicolor Corporation's Norwood facility, as a location at which the company could make an immediate positive impact. And whereas, Multicolor Corporation has now completed projects at Dorrell Field, including Multicolor employees cleaning up an historic statue and building a stone wall with landscaping around the monument, installing two new park signs, and several other maintenance and upgrade projects. And whereas, a team of volunteer employees and their families from Multicolor Corporation worked over a weekend to plant 18 new trees that had been donated by Shepherd Chemical Company. And whereas, in addition to their transformative work at Dorrell Field, Multicolor Corporation has donated $1,000 for new fencing at Marsh Park, three blocks south of Multicolor's Norwood facility at Beach Street's intersection with Marsh Avenue. And whereas, these improvements will be enjoyed by people who live, work, and play in Norwood for years to come. Be it resolved by the council in the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, on behalf of the people of the city, that the council congratulates and formally thanks Multicolor Corporation and its employees for their exemplary citizenship and their meaningful contributions to the quality of life in the city of Norwood. Resolution recognizing and thanking Multicolor Corporation Global Label Solutions. Resolution recognizing and thanking Multicolor Corporation Global Label Solutions.
Mr. Mumford.
I move the resolution to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Blair.
Yeah, I would just like to say, Brad, it's been great working with you and your company. And, you know, you, your company is basically just like Shepherd Chemical. I mean, we love having companies here that take pride in Norwood, and we hope to be able to continue our relationship moving forward.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you so much. You contacted us wanting to do something for the city, and it is so appreciated, especially in a time now where work money is an issue. You were the easiest people in the world to work with. You were just wonderful. I think I told you my father-in-law retired from your company, which made it extra special. And, you know, the work you've done is so appreciated, and I thank you and everybody else who's done the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Yes, I would like to also say thanks, because it does look nice over at Dorrell, and hopefully be around another 100 years, and, well, we won't be here, but be able to have that park still standing, and something else to go on there as well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. I would like to present you with a copy of the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you want to say something?
I would like to say, I think, thank you. This has been a great experience for us, the facility there, the U.S. Printing Facility. We are very proud of what we do inside of there, Multicolor Labels. We produce a lot of the labels, a lot of the products that you buy in the grocery store. And we produce the driver's license for almost everybody in America. Nobody seems to realize what it is. So we are very proud of what we do. We have a very tenured workforce that has a long history of doing great things and is very proud. We enjoy what we see in Dorrell Field. We enjoy watching it. We enjoy the soccer games and the things that go on, so we hope to continue to enjoy that for as long as we're around, and the company itself, for another 100 years as well. So, thank you all, it's been a great experience.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to a resolution recognizing the Shepherd Chemical Company's centennial and thanking the company for its arboreal gifts to the city. It's your pleasure. Mr. Clark.
I'd like to move that we have the first reading of this resolution in its entirety, and then second and third reading by caption only.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Resolution recognizing the Shepherd Chemical Company's centennial and thanking the company for its arboreal gifts to the city. Whereas, the Shepherd Chemical Company, founded in Norwood in 1916 and based on Highland Avenue, with facilities in four nations on three continents, is a custom manufacturer of high-quality inorganic metals, metal salts, and organic metal compounds, which improve products and processes such as lubricants, electronics, rubber adhesion, catalysts, pigments, personal care items, metal finishing, nutritional supplements, and polymer additives.
Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Towner are here, would you please like to come up to the podium? I apologize for not doing that earlier.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. And whereas, Mr. John Shepherd of the Shepherd Chemical Company approached the city of Norwood with the idea of the company donating 100 trees to the city to mark the centennial of the company's founding. And Shepherd Chemical worked with the city to determine the best way the trees could have beneficial impact on the Norwood community. And whereas, the company donated all the money necessary to purchase the 100 trees, then organized an employee-volunteer effort to plant more than 30 of those trees in the city of Norwood. And whereas, to date, over 50 large native trees have been planted in four city of Norwood parks, with the remaining 50 trees expected to be planted this year in four other parks. And whereas, these trees have already enhanced the city parks, and the beneficial impact of the company's donation will only grow over time. And whereas, the city of Norwood honors the many years of continued commitment by the Shepherd Chemical Company to our community, seeks to convey its sincere appreciation to John Shepherd and his family for making positive impacts on the city over four generations. And whereas, the 100 large native trees will be enjoyed by people who live, work, and play in Norwood for generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, on behalf of the people of the city, that the council congratulates the Shepherd Chemical Company on the centennial of its founding, and formally thanks the company, its founding family, and its employees for their exemplary citizenship and meaningful contributions to the quality of life in the city of Norwood. Resolution recognizing the Shepherd Chemical Company's centennial and thanking the company for its arboreal gifts to the city. Resolution recognizing the Shepherd Chemical Company's centennial and thanking the company for its arboreal gifts to the city.
Mr. Mumford.
I move the resolution to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President, again, sincere thank you on behalf of the city for the donation of the trees, because as you can tell by Park Avenue over the last few years, a lot of the ash trees that were there were kind of destroyed, and so that was done, but then you also have other, the trees that you're giving us for all the other parks around town, so they do over time die out, so we do appreciate that, and we definitely appreciate your community support and your business being here and hopefully another 100 years as well. So, thanks, Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So it's been said that the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, and the second best time to plant a tree is today. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of not just the residents of today, but the residents 20 years from now that are going to enjoy these trees that are going to be blooming and large, and so we really do appreciate that, and just thank you for your all's commitment to the city of Norwood. So we definitely, the city would not be what it is without you all, so we appreciate you.
Mr. Blair.
Yeah, and, you know, not just the trees, but everything else that you've done in the past, and how you've continuously sponsored the schools, and everything that you do for the community. It just, it's a big relief when you see companies that move in here that really take pride in being here, so I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the community does too.
Mr. Oris and I met with Mr. Towner and Mr. Shepherd on, met on several occasions, and they could not have been nicer to work with. I want to assure you that they are the most professional people. And Mr. Shepherd is a, he's a real arborist, he knows his trees. Kind of took us to task, like, I want to make sure these trees are going to be around for a while. And just good to work with. And Mr. Shepherd does a lot of things that you don't know about, and he would not want me to say, but he has done a lot of work in this city, especially over the last four or five years in particular that I know of, that he does not want credit for. Mr. Towner is right at his side, and I want to mention that Mr. Shepherd's son is also on the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. So this family's made, and their employees have made a huge commitment to this community. And on the day we were planting trees, one of your employers was down at one of the parks, and I said, I didn't know who they were, and I just said, "Mr. Shepherd is my hero." And she said, "Oh, he's my boss." And I'm like, "Oh, I'm glad I talked really well about him." And she said, "You should tell him that." And I said, "I have told him that, and he is my hero." So I just really want to thank you for all that you've done for the community, and I want to give you... So we'll have a roll call, and then I'll present you with a copy of the resolution. Is there any, are there any other comments before we pass the resolution? So the motion on the floor is to pass the resolution.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Thank you very much for your kind words and for the honor of this recognition. We're, we have been in Norwood, as was mentioned, for 100, and now 101 years. Last year we planted one, or we made arrangements to donate 100 trees. We've been here another year, we owe you a tree. We'll make sure that there's a tree plant. Thank you, we're delighted to be in Norwood, we're, we've been here, well, the 100 years has been a great 100 years, and we're looking forward to 100 more. And thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Towner, you want to say?
John's hard to follow. The only thing that did occur to me to say was that we did, of the 100 trees, we did take two oak trees and plant them on our property to replace an old sycamore tree. So those trees are still very much a part of the city of Norwood, and perhaps symbolize the fact that the company is very much a part of the city of Norwood too. And we, I've learned from John the value of constancy of purpose and doing good things over a long period of time, and so I hope to be a part of continuing that tradition at Shepherd, and bless your work here in Norwood.
Thank you very much. The gentleman from Multicolor, the trees that you planted at Dorrell Field were donated by Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Our next recognition is Chief Kramer.
Dear Mr. Brown, at council on June 27th, I would like to present lifesaving awards to Sergeant Lewis, Police Officer Harrison, and Police Officer Lackman for the actions at a fire that helped save a child's life. I will also be presenting an accommodation to Citizen Ben Zoski. I may have two additional accommodations that I would present to two members of the Crossroads Church who helped with the Go Local event in Norwood. Thank you. William Kramer, Chief of Police, City of Norwood. I don't have the last two.
Okay. Mr. Clark.
I'd like to receive and file the letter and give Chief Kramer time to present the awards.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. You're up.
Madam President, members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I came here tonight to recognize three of our police officers and also one of our citizens. Sergeant Dave Lewis, Police Officer Ryan Harrison, Police Officer Brad Chapman, and Ben Zoski would come up here. Where should they stand? Like here, alongside?
By you? Let's get this chair out of the way. You want to move it up here?
All right. So I wanted to commend the actions of these officers. On May 20th, 5307 Moller Avenue, we had a structure fire in one of the apartment buildings up there. It was an eight-unit apartment building. Sergeant Lewis was the first one to arrive on the scene, and he was met by Ben Zoski. Zoski advised Sergeant Lewis what was going on. Sergeant Lewis could see people from the second-floor apartment leading out yelling for help. Police Officers Ryan Harrison and Bradley Chapman arrived shortly thereafter. They attempted to identify as many people, to identify how many people were left in the building. Sergeant Lewis attempted to enter the building to guide residents from the second floor out, however, the smoke was too intense, and he exited the building with the help of Officer Harrison. Sergeant Lewis informed the residents on the second floor to remain in the window to keep from being overcome by the smoke. Sergeant Lewis, Police Officers Harrison and Police Officers Chapman could hear a female yelling from the back of the building as they were speaking to second-floor residents. The three proceeded to the back and observed a white female yelling that she could not breathe. She was later identified. She was holding a seven-month-old baby, her baby daughter, in her hands. She was in a state of panic. So Police Officers Harrison and Sergeant Lewis entered the back of the building in an attempt to reach Elliot, but again, the heat and the smoke were too intense. Officer Chapman remained outside instructing the female, trying to calm her, to hold the baby near the ledge of the window to keep the baby from being overcome. So at that point, Sergeant Lewis and P.O. Harrison exited the building, and Elliot remained, the female remained in a state of panic, stating that she could not breathe, she was in fear for her child's safety. Sergeant Lewis had P.O. Harrison and Ben Zoski hoist him up to the window, which was approximately 12 to 15 feet above the driveway. The female was able to extend her child down to Sergeant Lewis, where he was able to bring the child safely to the ground. The remaining residents, including that female, were removed by Norwood Fire via ladder. This was just an outstanding show of teamwork by our officers and also by resident Ben Zoski. I kind of thought about myself, and there is no way, if I was hoisted off the ground, that I would trust myself to take a watermelon, much less a seven-month-old baby. So these officers did an outstanding job. They deserve our lifesaving award. We do not have a lifesaving award for citizens, but I wanted to recognize Ben for his ability to help out, stay around. He pitched right in, and for him, I have one of our challenge coins. Our challenge coin has our five core values on it, which are commitment, integrity, pride, professionalism, and respect. All four of these, these gentlemen exhibited every one of those core values. So unfortunately, I do not have the actual lifesaving awards that are being manufactured at this time. I do have the ribbons, and I will get you the award shortly thereafter, but, so Sergeant Dave Lewis, I want to say thank you. You did an outstanding job. I appreciate Ryan Harrison's outstanding work. Thank you. Last week, Officer Chapman, thank you very much. Ben, thank you so much.
Do any of you want to say anything?
I would like to speak not only as an employee, but as a resident of Norwood. Our fire service, these fine young gentlemen that I work with, it's a testament to their professionalism and commitment to this city. So we should be proud of not only our fire and police service, but that we have a resident that was willing to join in, like he did. I never met Ben before that night, but I trusted him, and he, you can see, he's a rather large guy. He didn't have a problem lifting me up there, but he definitely, when I came out, I looked right at him, and, because Ryan was behind me and Brad was over there, and I said, "We got to get that baby out of that window." And that's what he did. I stepped up and I told Ryan, and they just lifted me up and away I went. But it was, it was a rather exciting night, but, you know, when you're standing there and you're watching people yell out the window, I mean, first and foremost, you're a human, and you're going to help them. It, you know, it's not anything that any of these guys in the back of this room wouldn't have done for these people. So I think we, you know, we owed a lot for our men in blue, as well as our firemen as well. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you. Comments from council? Mr. Sancker.
Actually, I wouldn't expect anything less from you guys. I mean, from the training you've received, to the professionalism as the chief spoke of, I mean, you just go be on the call, whatever would have taken to, you know, preserve the life of that child and the people inside that building. Ben, you know, if you ever want to take the test, you know, feel free.
We've got a few brothers here with you.
So I do thank all of you, and then also the fire department, because if I'm not mistaken, they contain that to pretty well, just, you know, most of the upstairs there. So thanks again for your service and helping out with the residents here. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Hanahan.
I'd like to say we're all aware we have an outstanding police and fire department in the city, and you guys just proved it again. Thank you so much. If I'm ever in a bad situation, I hope you guys are there.
Mr. Blair.
I just want to say that I appreciate you guys. I know that there are times in the city where our police and fire may feel underappreciated due to the circumstances surrounding the city. But I do want to speak from the heart here and say that my family and I, we've lived here a very long time, and we know that we're very privileged to have the police and fire that we do. And I respect you guys going out there on a limb. To do what you guys do, day in and day out, takes a special person. Not anybody could just go out there and do that. So I appreciate it.
Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, just wanted to echo their sentiments, and just really, Ben, just thank you very much for stepping up. I mean, these gentlemen are trained, and I very much respect that, but you just decided that day that you were going to help, and you didn't get your phone out and start recording, you actually stepped in and started helping. And so just really do appreciate that, and glad that you're here in the city of Norwood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate you. Thank you, Chief. And then we got to get on to the dry stuff, the rest of the business. Before we have the public hearing on the tax budget, Mr. Stith is asked to give an auditor's administrative report. Mr. Stith.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Quickly on the administrative report, just to let you know, we have made several payments this month, the final Med-Pace payment, and we did go ahead and pay off the balance to the Police and Fire Pension Fund. We paid that off early after talking to the state auditors, because there were penalties associated with every late payment. And if we're negative already, let's not drag this out till October, November, just get caught up on it. This is also a three payroll month in June, which means it's one of the more expensive months, so our balance at the end of June is projected to be about negative $2.7 million. That means we are $2.7 million over what we should be spending out of the general fund, which means that money is coming out of other funds. We are only allowed to do that to make payments because of the written authorization from the auditor of state under the fiscal emergency. The good news in that is this is rock bottom. This is as low as it's going to go, and our projections, now that we've caught up on many things and made the first of the three payroll months, this is, should be our lowest point, and from this point out, we'll be climbing out of that negative hole. The audit for the city for the year 2016 has been completed. It's going through the final steps of the kind of administrative assembly of it, and you should see that out within the next 30 days. That's a short report, but the thing that I really wanted to talk about was the tax budget and the reason you've got a new copy in front of you. There were a couple of errors in the tax budget, none of which were material or make any significant difference to the document. any significant difference to the document. It still shows us being over $2 million negative at the end of this year and still being about $1.6 million negative at the end of next year. When you look at page three, which is under exhibit one, for some reason, Excel decided to substitute N's with M's. This is the same document we've used every year. It's never done this before, but sometimes when you're using large documents, it will make these types of errors. So it should not say thumbed name gemoral, thumbed, thumb classification governmental gemoral revamus. Those aren't typing errors. That's actually something that Excel did. We went in and corrected it. So you have a correct copy of that. You'll see that capital M's were replaced, all of the lowercase n's also in those top few lines. Sometimes it will get a little quirky. In doing that, I went ahead and looked through the rest of the document. This form was not, is one that we've used for years. It came from the county. I also noticed misspellings of the words cigarette and liquor and encumbrances in one place. So I did correct those, but it looks like the majority of this problem was actually the way it assembled and printed into a PDF document. The other change that was made is on page eight, under the debt service funds. When we added in the Linden Point and Rookwood funds into this document, they didn't total on the line that says total debt service. The fund balances are correct, but the two numbers added together, it doesn't show, so I did correct that. So those have been corrected. The document is still the same. We still have a $2 million plus deficit at the end of the year. And I think that that is the important thing. And while it's kind of funny, the way that the words were assembled with M's, what's not funny is the negative balance that we're gonna have. So you got a nice clean document here. There were some comments from the public online talking about, number one, the misspelling, number two, the two numbers that didn't add together. The other thing was about the fact that if you add all the numbers on these categories, on these columns together, that you might be one or two dollars off when you get to the bottom, when you're talking about $20 million. The reason is, when you report government accounting, you don't add the pennies in. The pennies are there and the pennies are in the spreadsheet. So if it says $1,000, if you have $1,033, it's gonna say $1,000. But then at the end, when it's $20 million and 59 cents, it's gonna be $20 million and $1. So as these add up, they are adding in all of those extra pennies and all of those cents and that's why you might see a difference of one or two dollars. Anybody who wants to see this with all the pennies added in, we can just expand it out, print it out, and it all balances. But they are there, they just don't end up being shown because it's a lot easier to look at something that doesn't have the dollar sign in front of it and the dot and the two decimals after that. There were some comments about missing $1.5 million from a FEMA grant fund and why wasn't that reported on there? This was done by a city employee. The FEMA grant fund that we have right now is a SAFER grant fund. The SAFER grant is a reimbursement fund. That type of grant reimburses the city for the money it spends for six firemen that were hired. That means we expend the money out of the general fund to pay these individuals and then once a month, the fire department, who is in charge of the SAFER grant, applies for a reimbursement from the federal government for the cost of those individuals. Since that money comes back to the city and they were expended out of the general fund, it shows up as revenue in the general fund and doesn't show up in Fund 18, the FEMA grant fund. So yes, we have a FEMA grant, but it's not tracked in the FEMA grant fund. Because it deals with payroll and it's a reimbursement grant, it goes directly back to the general fund because that's where the money was expended. Those are the changes and the comments that I've had on it so far. Are there any questions to the changes that I can answer?
Any questions of Mr. Stith? Thank you for those clarifications. Is there anything else that you need to add to your report before we go to public Thank you. So right now, we will come out of our regular session and we will go into a public hearing. So I would like to declare this public hearing open. We will have a notice of public hearing on the 2018 tax budget was given, that on the 27th day of June 2017 at 7:30 PM, a public hearing will be held on the budget prepared by the City of Norwood in Hamilton County, Ohio, for the next succeeding fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. It will be held in Council Chamber, second floor of City Hall, 4645 Montgomery Road, Norwood, Ohio. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against of the tax budget? We'll hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the tax budget first. Is there anyone who wants to comment on, in favor of the tax budget or has questions on the tax budget? If you do, please come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or have questions on the tax budget? Hearing none. I'm sorry. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Leslie Stevenson. My address is 1849 Tilden Avenue. Sorry for the pause. I didn't know if you were still hanging out with just favor and questions. I do have a couple of questions. Can I begin?
Yes.
Okay. So the document that I had was from the handout from, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. So I was making edits as the auditor was speaking. And what did you note? Can you, Mr. Auditor, share, when does the grant end? You were just talking about the, I think you called the SAFER grant?
Can you answer that or is that a fire department question?
Yeah, that's really a question for the people that run that particular grant because there's two active grants right now that end at two different times. And currently, because our staffing is down, they've not been reimbursing the past few months and that is something that the fire chief is currently negotiating with the grant holder initially.
And thumbing pages, one second. So my understanding of the process is this is the budget that's being proposed and so I think I heard in the previous meeting, kind of a request from some of the council members for ideas around how, how things could be balanced. And I'm not certain if that was specific to the fiscal plan that ask was being put out or if that was actually an ask for input on the tax budget. So this is a point of clarity. Is the process unfolding now asking for a resident input on ideas?
Now, Mr. Stith, do you want to answer? You're better to answer.
Yeah, thank you.
I could probably just clarify for what the tax budget is.
You can clarify what the tax budget is?
Yep.
So the tax budget is not a binding budget for the city. This is the first steps that are taken for next year. We have to tell the county and the state what our plans are for the tax money, specifically property taxes that are collected from the state. So we have to show that we are making those first planning steps for next year. This does not show any changes involved in the fiscal emergency plan because that has not gone into effect yet. So that plan is actually a totally separate document that is being worked at and there's a meeting tomorrow on that. Every year, we do a tax budget. That's the first step. It gets you thinking about how we're gonna be spending our money next year. And then the budget itself, the permanent appropriations are usually passed in December for the following year unless they pass temporary appropriations, which only last for three months and kind of buy some time to figure out what you're doing for the following year. So this year, we had temporary followed by permits. But this is what we file with the county and the state to prove that we are going to utilize the money that they're holding for us.
Okay. Thank you for that point of clarity. I was hearing confusion and I'm glad that you clarified that. I do have one more question before this is ratified. I think you said December. Will there be another public hearing?
This is the only public hearing that we have on this and then it goes to the county and the county has to approve it. Is that correct?
Correct.
This is, this is for the year December, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
There are current copies sitting on the desk there. And if you go to norwoodauditor.com, there's a corrected copy on the front page.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the tax budget? Anyone who wishes to speak against the tax budget? Anyone who wishes to speak against the tax budget? Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. We will go back into regular session of council. We will now move on to consideration of the tax budget for the year ending December 31st, Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I would recommend that the tax budget as submitted be approved for submission to the county auditor for them to review for their approval so we can move forward on the next step of our financial journey.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to thank the resident, Ms. Stevenson, that spoke. I think that some of her questions were probably questions that other people had as well and I'm glad that they were asked. I also want to, you know, just again, clarify for anybody at home or make sure they know that, you know, this is just something that we have to fill out for the county, but this council will be approving actual appropriations for fiscal year 2018, you know, sometime later this year. So there will definitely be opportunities to speak up on that as we get closer. I mean, every council meeting, any resident can speak on that, on any topic. So if they have questions about that, they're definitely willing to come forward anytime. So thank you, Madam President.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the tax budget as prepared for submission to the county. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no, a request to address council. So we'll move on to reports of standing committees of council. And I do have a committee of the whole report dated June the 21st, 2017, to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your committee of the whole, to whom was referred the financial recovery plan, beg leave to submit the following report. The State Auditor's Office reviewed all fund expenditures and revenues historically from 2014 to the present, along with projections through 2021 with the following assumptions: flat revenue from income and property taxes, no salary increases other than step increases, no increase in insurance costs, a small increase for materials and supplies equal to about 1% projected cost of living adjustment. Council will need to decide if advances made to various funds out of the general fund from 2018 should be repaid or forgiven by ordinance. Members were advised to review the presented financials and make recommendations for increased revenue and/or decreased expenditures so that the financial impact of those actions can be included in the financial recovery plan. Another committee of the whole meeting to discuss these options will be scheduled for June the 28th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Respectfully submitted, Donna Lake Chairperson, Mr. Clark, Mrs. Stickley, Mr. Blair, Mrs. Hanahan, Mr. Sankar and Mr. Mumper. Mr. Mumper?
I move the committee report be accepted.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to second reading of ordinances. Oh, before we move on, I should tell you that I did speak with the mayor and he does plan on being there tomorrow, Mrs. Stickley, per your request. So he will be here. We'll move on to second readings of ordinances. It's a resolution honoring the Eagle Scouts Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning from Boy Scouts of America, Troop Nine, in Norwood. This was the, or resolution, we had the first reading on last time, couldn't pass it because there were only five people here. Mr. Mumper?
I move we have the second and third reading by caption.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second and third reading.
Resolution honoring Eagle Scouts Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning from Boy Scouts of America, Troop Nine, in Norwood. Resolution honoring Eagle Scouts Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning from Boy Scouts of America, Troop Nine, in Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We don't, we have no readings of ordinances. We'll move on to administration reports. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Under administrative reports, I wanted to bring up the, all of the properties the city owns. I was contacted, or my office was contacted, I spoke to him and actually, Mr. Gary spoke to him well, as well, somebody who's interested in one of the parcels. I spoke with the mayor yesterday and his recommendation is we just put them up for auction, start putting up the ones that we think are most likely to go for auction and eliminate them. And before we started looking into doing that, I wanted to run it by council to see if anybody's got thoughts or if we want to have a more thorough discussion about any of these.
Thoughts? Could you explain why, your letter that you sent us, if we own them, we would have to pay them back taxes?
That is, when, okay, we went through the big financial crisis. Several states sued some of the big banks and recovered a whole bunch of money and the state money, the money for, the Ohio share, the state decided to parcel out to different port authorities, to different counties, to use for demolition of property that had been foreclosed on and was falling apart. A part of that was come up, what can we do to renovate properties? What's something we can do to get the empty ones out of there? And a process was set up whereby through tax foreclosure or property owner for tax foreclosure, then cities or development corporations would be able to kind of put their names in and say, if nobody bids on this, instead of it just going to the state, we would like it. When we first had the conversations with the port authority, it was, oh, it would wipe off all of the old leads, including the old tax leads. And so in 2011, I think the first one we picked up, that happened and the city filed for a tax exemption, you know, for tax exempt status and the county said, and the state said, "Well, no, you don't get rid of the old tax. You gotta pay off the old taxes." And taking a look at the statute, doing some digging, the statute says if it goes to a port authority kind of development corporation like Hamilton County has, they have the redevelopment corporation there, or if it goes to the state, then the tax, the old taxes are wiped off. At the end of that, it adds, "And a city can get the property too." But it doesn't say the city's taxes get wiped off. And I've spoken with the county, I've spoken with the county treasurer, the county auditor and with the state tax commissioner and everyone is in agreement and the city of Cincinnati's legal department and the port authority and everyone is in agreement that, no, you're stuck with the, with, you know, what we had in the past. But the city kept sending in the letter saying, yes, we would like that parcel. And we can't get an exemption. The only way to get the property to be exempt, to avoid taxes in the future, is if you file it, and even if the county treasurer will certify the amount you owe and it gets sent to the state, the state will immediately send you a bill that says you have to pay it within 90 days. So we can't get them exempt unless we pay those off and no one has a plan to do anything with them anyway, for the most part. There's a few that we're actually using. It's the new park across from Williams Avenue and there's one that...
Is that the Pocahontas Park down on Floral or something?
Yeah, there's a few around that are like that and there's a few that have houses on, most of them are vacant lots. The houses have been torn down, either the city did it or the county did it. Actually, some of the owners did it and then just, well, we don't want it and walked away. So we have a number of these questions, what we want to do with them. There are a few people that are interested in a few of the parcels, but, you know, the process of getting them valued, there's a long involved possibility of selling them if you can establish fair market value and if they will pay what that is. The gentleman I spoke with last week, you know, the county's value is, is pretty high for this parcel and he's like, "That's ridiculous. I'm not paying that." So we can go through this process and try to market them or whatever, or as the mayor recommends, just start auctioning these off, the ones that anybody's interested in at least, and we can go down the list, figure out if there's anyone to keep, anyone to do something else with. But to get them, we need to get them off the bus because the auditor keeps paying the last six months' assessment every six months. But that, that old balance is still, is still hanging out there.
Mr. Blair?
I would just like to thank Keith for working on this, along with Judy Dos Correll. She is realtor here in Norwood. She helped out with a lot of this by going and getting the... She helped out with a lot of this by going and getting the market value of a lot of these pieces of real estate. So, her just doing that on her free time, not charging the city a dime, that's great. So, really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Mrs. Stickley.
If a third-party purchaser purchases them from an auction, do they take it subject to these old past liens?
I'm thinking not. I think that they wouldn't, you know, that would be fact, if that was the case, it would certainly be factored into the price. I think we're kind of on the hook for, years I could figure out, we're on the hook for the old, you know, for the old delinquencies. I did contact the county, it was several months ago, hey, are any of these you're interested in? Because the port authority can take them if they want them, and then all the old delinquencies go away. But they haven't said, oh, yeah, we really want this one and that one, so.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Sankar, go ahead.
No, just gonna, I mean, if, if the port authority, if we would tell, ask them, are you interested in these properties, or can you take them? They would then become property of the port authority to do with whatever reinvestment or sell them off, that they would want to do with it. It wouldn't, we would just wash our hands of it.
Correct.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a follow-up question, Mr. Sankar to the law director. So, would we then, if we did that, you know, gave to the port authority, would we have to still pay those back taxes, or would that, could that be wiped?
I don't think so. I think in that case, it could be wiped out.
And if they express, I mean, so like, are you saying that there is, they have not expressed willingness, or have we reached out to them? What happens if we just don't ever pay the taxes on it? We don't ever, I mean, will we just let it go? Does, will the county just take it back? How does that work?
Well, and that's what, what actually would happen, I don't know what could happen, because actually, the, we've gotten notices that the county is selling the liens, the back tax liens, on some of our properties. In theory, yeah, it could go, and that would be, oh, we'll just, we'll ignore them. But the thing is, we're still paying the current assessment every six months. But the, the thing is, if you do a tax, if there's a tax foreclosure, if there's a foreclosure on any kind of lien, if somebody buys the lien and then forecloses on it, and puts it up for auction and sells it off, we're still legally on the hook for the deficiency. I don't know if the state's gonna sue us to come back for that deficiency or not, but you don't get to walk away that way. I mean, it's a practical matter, when property goes to the state, it does, because they're not gonna chase down whoever it is, for the most part. You know, this old rundown house that nobody cares about, this, you know, they're not owned by somebody that now lives in New Jersey, the state's not gonna follow them around and try to track that down, so.
So could you, if you do the auction, can you consent minimum bids that would pay off the back taxes?
Correct, we could.
That was my first question, and then another question is, what happens to those two parcels that we know of that we're using? There's been some, a lot of labor and some community development block grant funds that have been expended on those two parcels, that are parks, the Williams Avenue Garden and the little pocket park down on Floral Avenue.
There's also a piece of the bridge here, like the sidewalk right next to the bridge between Frish's and, and the bridge going over the lateral, that we get, the city got back in the 80s, and we just never filed an exemption for. We basically need to pay, for those, we should just pay back, pay off the back taxes, and so we can file exemptions and stop the bleeding going forward. The exemptions can be retroactive up to three years, but you gotta be paid up to date when you file them.
Thank you. Mrs. Stickley.
As a follow-up to if theoretically, these tax lien holders, the people that are selling, who are buying the tax liens, if they did foreclose, and there's, they come after you for the deficiency, the city for deficiency, there's, there's still only two-year statute of limitations to recoup a deficiency balance. So I don't know, I would think that that would also apply to a city deficiency.
And my question to that is, are two years from the date, they acquire it?
Judgment.
Okay, so, they'd have two years after they filed that to collect. So we could actually maybe put off paying them for two years?
Put that on our financial recovery plan. We're not gonna pay our back taxes for two years. Any other questions? So the mayor's, the mayor wants to just put select pieces up for auction?
To start getting rid of that one.
Start putting them up for auction. What's your pleasure? Mrs. Stickley.
Sorry, I have one more question. Putting the parcels up for auction with minimums, like with a minimum bid, or as whatever they go for?
A minimum is probably the way, at least to get some sense, but we may end up with, okay, we have the minimum and nobody bids, because it's more than they want to pay, and setting the minimums, so. I mean, the mayor's thought was, just, just put them up, don't worry, no minimums, just, just do it, get rid of them, and that'll set fair market value, whatever you get out of the auction. And my thinking was to kind of start with the ones that people are interested in, and there are of, at least one, and maybe a couple other people that are interested in acquiring, just finding, what properties are available that we might, that I might be able to pick up, people who are in rehab and potentially infill housing, so. But it's, it's hanging, I have giant piles of paper, I have giant binders full of files on these things. And every six months, I get the letter from Marcus saying, which one of these should we pay? And just, we need to clean it up, one way or the other.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I definitely just agree with the mayor's, part of the mayor's recommendation, but I think, you know, I don't know whose discretion, but the ones that have the most commercial value, which, I mean, there are a couple, that I think there's been some commercial interest expressed in, not sure though. You know, I would just hope that those, we at least get the minimum, if possible there, but I should-
Before we put any, any particular parcel up, before we sell any particular, we need, it will come back to council, but I will discuss this further with the mayor and the safety service director, and we'll move forward on the idea of auctioning some of these with minimums, and see where we can go from there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the information. We have no other requests to address council, is there any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, just, I know we had discussed it earlier, it came up in regards to the financial recovery plan. The board is going to be meeting on July the 6th. We had our meeting last week, and have another one tomorrow. I have sent some questions that I had to the state auditor for some clarification on some of the numbers, and jotted down some ideas in regards to things that may or may not be of some value to put into the plan. But what we're gonna need for them, we're gonna need ideas, good, bad, and different. Some may be practical, some may not be, but we need to compile a list of what we would think we would want to see in the recovery plan, whether that's revenues, or expenditure reductions, or whatever they may be, then they would need to be implemented into the plan by the state auditor. She would plug in the different ideas to see what that does for us, you know, like something, you may have an idea that some, well, we wouldn't be able to really put that into place until the end of 2018, so how will that affect us in 19, and 20, and 21? So, but she would like to have as much or as many different suggestions that we have or ideas, that she can compile these and get this back to us in a form, so we can kind of see where we are gonna be over the next few years. Because at the, at the end of 21, you know, we have to show that we're in the black before we can even submit it to the review board, and then for them to approve or disapprove, or tell you to go back to the drawing board. But, but we do, we will need suggestions and ideas, really as soon as tomorrow. So hopefully, we can at least have something that we can put together to forward to her, so she can get it back to us, so we, we have at least a couple days to look at it and to vote on it, is for submission, so.
As a follow-up, I did, after I received the reply from your email, I did speak, I had asked if they were, Anna Mary and April Davis were gonna come to the committee of the whole meeting. It was not their plan, they didn't want to just rehash what they had gone over at last meeting. They are going to be here in the city tomorrow during the day, working with the mayor on some ideas that he has. It was suggested that if you need to know what financial impact your ideas would have, if you would call Brenda Osterday, the mayor's secretary, in the morning, give her those suggestions, and Anna Mary Thomas and April Davis will do their best to put numbers together for us, how that would impact the bottom line, so that we will have that available for us for our meeting tomorrow. The Financial Planning and Supervision Commission does have a meeting scheduled for July the 6th, so we will likely need, well, we will definitely need to schedule a special council meeting, so that you all can adopt the financial recovery plan, so that we can have it to them by July the 6th. So, my guess would be, there's no way we can do it before July the 5th, with Friday being, Saturday being the first. So I don't know what everyone's availability is for July the 5th, which would be next week from Wednesday. Hopefully, we can have some numbers together by then, and have a plan that the mayor can submit to council, and you all can adopt. July 5th, sound okay? What time would you like?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock? All right, so let's set a special council meeting for July the 5th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, and the purpose of the special meeting is to consider and adopt the financial recovery plan. You'll get those notices out to the sunshine group? And so anyone who might have some suggestions, if you want to, like I said, give Mrs. Osterday a call, the mayor's secretary, and she will relay that information to the two ladies from the auditor's office, so that they can calculate savings. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question about the document. So Mr. Stith had provided a financial, almost, I guess it was a draft of this plan a couple of months ago, and in that draft, there was a section that included potential things that could happen, and how that could affect our budget. Did they by chance provide, do we have anything like that right now, do you think?
Do they have that document?
Well, do they slash, is that today, is that the most, well, I guess, do they, the two ladies from the auditor of state's office? Is there any update to that document, basically, that, to those numbers? Has anything like that been looked at?
Mr. Stith.
No, the initial plan that was given to you in November, and then again at the end of January, is what they used to make that plan.
Okay.
And so, all of those suggestions, they were describing how the final plan will look, all of those suggestions down at the bottom were things that are gonna be in that final plan when it comes out. But there's, pretty much all they've got is what you have there. It should end up looking more in the form of what, when it's actually the published plan, it'll look more like the document that I gave you. But that's just where they, they took that and confirmed the numbers, changed a few, got to the same, got to very similar, very similar totals, so.
They acknowledged in the committee of the whole, Mr. Stith, that your numbers were very close, that they had very little differences that they could find. And, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'm just curious, so, and the document that Jim put together included, like, here's every suggestion we've ever had to save money or to bring in new revenue. And I think maybe James' question is whether the state auditor has run numbers on any of those suggestions. See, if we went with, if we did this, it would mean this many dollars, if we did that, it meant this many dollars. Has anybody run numbers on any of those options? I think is maybe the question James is getting at here.
And that might be a question to call and ask Brenda, to ask of them. Mr. Sankar.
Because I do not believe they have.
I don't think so either.
However, one thing they did, pardon me.
Go ahead.
And I did confirm with them today that in all the personnel numbers that are spread out there, that does reflect the current health insurance payments, and that, you know, because I know one time we talked, we could use the $500,000 as part of our recovery plan, depend upon when we were gonna put it together, we didn't know when that was going to be implemented. However, the personnel numbers that are, that were given to us in that draft, they do reflect the current health insurance payments, and whatever savings we would receive this year is included in that.
Mr. Clark.
Also, excuse me, the personnel numbers, do we know exactly, is that our current staffing numbers, or what, that those numbers were based on? Do we know exactly when they pulled? I think she said something like April or May, but I just wasn't sure.
Mr. Sankar.
Virtually, yes, every department, except for the police department, because they've lost a number of people recently. So we had to take that into, or they had to take that into consideration when budgeting for the police. So the police number that's figured in, you know, these numbers here, is not based upon their current staffing level that they have over there right now, so.
I believe, we can ask the mayor to clarify tomorrow, but I thought the number might have been six additional police.
Be out of school, but I, maybe been like 51, but right now, like 46 or so.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. And so, does, do we know by chance, is there any, is there any amount budgeted in here to, like, any kind of capital expenses, like replacing an ambulance, or a fire truck, or a ladder truck, or police cruisers, or the bucket truck for Public Works? Is any of that included in the plan?
Mr. Sankar.
Basically, what's included in here are a couple new cruisers, paramedic, medic unit. The bucket truck was, was not in this, because it may not be coming out of the general fund, potentially, or the dump truck. So those are things that are not in here currently, but there is nothing in there for a pumper fire truck at this point.
Okay.
And the state auditor's office understands there'll be pent-up demands for not only vehicles, but building maintenance and things like that, that will, once we get a handle on our day-to-day expenses, that they will eventually want us to look at as well. They really want us to get a handle on our personnel and day-to-day expenses before we even tackle those things that could be pent-up demands that we haven't addressed over the years. Mr. Sankar.
There were a couple fixed expenses in there as well, for like the onboard computers for the cruisers, and then also for the-
Radios, fire radios?
Fire and the radio equipment as well.
Already included in there. Trying to remember everything from me. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. And maybe I need to call them tomorrow, I apologize for this. So I know, it had been pointed online, but I noticed as well, the hotel, I guess, the revenue for hotels, we have a new hotel being built right now in Brookwood, did they, is there any comment on whether we can even just very conservatively estimate some of that revenue as, you know, an increase in future years?
I don't, I don't know that that's even included in there, do you? I don't recall even having that conversation, Mr. Sankar.
It was built in my, it's not, it's built in mine.
It was built in Mr. Stith's, but I don't know that it's in the numbers. I don't think it is.
Perhaps it should be.
Yes, for sure. And I also spoke with, just to clarify as well, I got my new tax evaluation letter in the mail, and I asked Ms. Davis if, or Anna Mary Thomas, if we could then find out how much additional revenue, if any, we would get from property taxes, and the county will still not give us that information, because- still not give us that information because just as our tax budget has to go to the county and be approved by them, the county's tax evaluations and the tax amounts, the tax rates and amounts have to go to the state and be approved by the state. So they do, they, the state auditor's office, the workers, do not have that information yet because it has not been approved by the state legislator, so we can't build that, and we can, we can maybe estimate and say, this is our plan, that we're going to have an increase. I know lots of people got letters that their property values were increased, but how that will affect, I know the letter that I got said that if you were raised or lowered by a certain percentage, it doesn't necessarily mean that your tax dollars are going to, are going to be increased that percentage either, it depends on the tax rates, so. That, the plan as it stands, the monies, the discussion assumes that those are flat for now, until we can get a firm number. Any other discussion? So just a reminder, there'll be a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow here at 6:00 and then we'll have a special council meeting on July 5th at 6:00 to consider passage of the financial recovery plan. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Sankar.
I didn't know if you wanted to announce, Madam President, about the fireworks coming up on the 4th of July down at Waterworks Park.
I'm not a member of the committee, I don't even know what time it starts, do you?
7:00.
What is it?
7:00.
7:00? So, July 4th.
Fireworks start at dark.
Fireworks, I know, I saw there's going to be, we had a letter at council meeting last time, lots of entertainment and stuff on the plaza and bands and face painting and things, so, and then the fireworks start at dark, hopefully it's not going to rain. I heard today that the forecast isn't real good, but hopefully, they said last weekend was going to be horrible too, and it was nice, so hopefully we'll have a good weekend. It's just down at Waterworks Park. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, just a comment on the fireworks, I mean, they have a very impressive list of sponsors and just, I mean, really the who's who of organizations in Norwood, and it's just really impressive that they're all stepping up. Shepherd Chemical, and it was on there, I'm not sure of Multicolor, but Paycor, Kroger, I mean, many, many others. So I think it's just really, hands down, thank you to them, but thank you to that committee for working to get that funded and to have that great event each year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other new business? We'll move on to communications, the first is a letter from the Hamilton County Auditor regarding the street levy millage.
County auditor, county auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby certify the following. On June 7, 2017, the taxing authority of the council of the city of Norwood certified a copy of its resolution number 8-2017, adopted May 23, 2017, requesting the county auditor to certify the current tax valuation of the city of Norwood and the amount of revenue that would be produced by two mills. The levy is a tax outside the 10-mill limitation for the purpose of construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges at a rate not exceeding two mills pursuant to Section 5705.19G of the Ohio Revised Code and will be placed on the ballot at the November 7, 2017 election. The levy type is additional. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the stated millage, assuming the tax valuation of the city of Norwood remains constant throughout the life of the levy, is calculated to be $726,072 per year. The total estimated tax valuation of the city of Norwood used in calculating the estimated property tax revenue is $363,036,190. Dusty Rhodes, Auditor, Hamilton County, Ohio.
What's your pleasure? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I recommend the letter be received and filed and a copy sent to the streets committee.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel, is there any discussion? Mr. Moore, can you clarify the statement that says this will be placed on the ballot on November 7, 2017 election? I'm assuming that that will not happen unless we pass a second resolution, could you please clarify that so that we make it very clear to the public?
That is correct, if it was placed on the ballot in November, this is what the county estimates the numbers would end up being if it went on the ballot in November and passed.
Thank you very much.
But it would take, you're right, it would take a whole nother resolution from council to put it on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and to place it in the streets committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We've already dealt with communication two, we'll move on to communication number three, a letter from the planning commission regarding the PUD zone change public hearing.
To city council, on June 7, 2017, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing for the purpose of the placement of a PUD, Planned Unit District, over the following properties. Light Manufacturing M1 to Light Manufacturing Planned Unit Development M1 PUD for the parcels including but not limited to, identified by the Hamilton County Auditor as 3,000 Harris Avenue, 615-0019-195, 3,001 Harris Avenue, 651-0019-0131, 3,002 Harris Avenue, 651-0019-0196, 2935 Duck Creek Road, 651-0019-0192, 3,004 Harris Avenue, 651-0019-0194, 3010 Harris Avenue, 651-0019-0190, 3,000 Duck Creek Road, 651-0019-0109, 651-0019-0193, 651-0019-0124, 651-0019-0074, 651-0010-0115. Light Manufacturing M1 to Light Manufacturing Planned Unit Development M1 PUD for the property identified by the Hamilton County Auditor as 2511 Highland Avenue, 651-0017-0031. The planning commission listened to the rationale presented by staff and voted to recommend the PUD zone change to city council for final resolution. Per Section 1117.10 of the Norwood zoning code, upon receipt of the recommendations of the planning commission, Norwood City Council shall schedule a public hearing and final action. From Joseph Gears, Chairman of the Norwood Planning Commission.
What's your pleasure? Mr. Mupper.
Move the letter be received and filed and we establish a public hearing.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? We do have to give a 30-day notice, so my suggestion would be looking at the calendar, then after 30 days would be August the 8th, does that give you sufficient time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll establish the public hearing at our August 8th meeting at 7:30. Is there any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and to establish the public hearing for August the 8th at 7:30. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Our last communication is a letter from the law director regarding executive session.
Dear council members, I am requesting that council go into executive session at the June 27, 2017 meeting to discuss pending litigation. Please place this matter at the end of the agenda. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Norwood Law Director.
Is everybody afraid to make the motion? Mr. Bonzel.
I move that the letter be received and filed and we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Madam President, can we do pending and imminent litigation?
Could you?
Pending and imminent.
And imminent, okay.
Yes, pending and imminent litigation.
So the, so your motion is to receive and file the letter and to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending and imminent litigation. Is there a second, Mr. Mupper? Please get that right. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will be going into executive session, we ask those to leave who are in the audience. We will come back into session only to adjourn, we will not discuss any other, and there will be no other discussion about council member or any items before council. If we could stop the TV and turn off the microphones. Okay, we are out of executive session and back in regular session, I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Blair had to leave during the executive session to go to work. Mr. Mupper.
I move we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, this meeting is hereby adjourned.